The purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. Pardon me, I'd ask that you all arise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Clerk Spencer, I ask that you call the roll.
Deuter, absent.
Sabatino?
Here.
Leader?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palmsky?
Nothing was happening.
Palmsky, absent. York?
Here.
Toledo, absent. Healy?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Eleven present, three absent.
Eleven present, three absent, we have a quorum. Before we move on to written receipt of communication, just a brief announcement, I think most folks are aware, but one of our honorary fighter fighters lost his battle last week. Peyton O'Brien, close friend of the city, close friend of the fire department, one of the toughest kids and fighters I know, lost his battle with cancer. And I'm asking that everybody, please keep the O'Brien family and Peyton in their prayers during this holiday season, just be thankful for what you have. And I'm asking you to please join me in a moment of silence in honoring Peyton O'Brien. Okay, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. On to Agenda Item 3, Written Receipt of Communication from the public. Is there anybody at this time who has any written communications they wish to submit? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will go on to Public Forum, Agenda Item 4. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any issue they may choose. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, out of respect for other folks that may want to speak and out of respect for the work that we have to do here this evening. When you're called upon, I ask that you come over to this microphone, please identify yourself, and address is optional. Clerk Spencer, is there anybody who has signed in for public forum this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll start with Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Merry Christmas to all, and I hope you all have a good New Year, now you're here. It's been a good year for the business community. Prime example was last meeting. Got a partner on the garage, he finds a scrap of paper, cost me $90,000. Got a deal with the Han development. Amazing, structural engineers couldn't find columns. Cost me parking spaces, not the owner, cost me. I guess the legal, we couldn't find a scrap of paper. Everybody that comes to this town wants to build something, wants to remodel something, always winds up here. Council just reaches into public's pocket and, ah, puts a couple hundred thousand here and a couple hundred thousand there. Yeah, what's a couple hundred thousand here and what's a couple hundred thousand there? Interesting, isn't it? Nobody can pay for anything in this town unless there's public money involved. And this council religiously gives it away. No question, no argument, they're all entitled to it. Well, on the agenda, we got increase in water and sewage. This year, we had an increase in rubbish, increase in water, sewage. Rubbish is picked up in a poorer manner than it ever has been. Got caught by the state, more millions spent. Not our fault. IMT, not our fault. Money invested, it's lost. Taxpayer will make up the difference. Sad taxpayer, public hearings on water retention. They're all sorry, really are sorry, people flood. They're not gonna let any land be used unless this council forks up some more money. And you're gonna do it. It's public money, it's not yours.
Mr. Pagash, could you wrap your comments up, please?
Yeah, my comments are this. If this is representative government, I sure hate to hell to see what a change in government would be like.
Tamara Brenner.
Tamara Brenner, Item 629 tonight, where you're approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the parking garage. I have a couple of issues with it. First of all, in Exhibit B, this is the minor of the two things, but in Exhibit B where it says adding the cost to construct multiplied by the retail portion of the project, that's a little offensive, the language there, because it's not the cost to construct that's being dealt with here, it's the cost to purchase land, land cost only, that the developer's paying a portion of to purchase the retail thing, he's not paying any part of the fraction of the construction cost, which is more, way more than the five million that's on this page. So can you just change it so it says cost to purchase land times retail portion of the project? It was a horrible deal that the council approved in 2009 that allowed that formula to be in place, in which case this retail portion is being sold way undervalued to this developer. Also, the DPZ Committee report talks about things that were omitted from the cold dark shell, what the city was gonna provide and what the developer was gonna provide. And that might be true in the 2009 specific pages there, but since 2009, there's been a lot of communication between the city and the developer about this project in the form of memos and letters and other things. And one of the, one thing that's gone on is the items that the developer was gonna be responsible for have steadily been decreased over time. In the various FOIA documents that I obtained from the city in the process of studying this project, I saw, I saw the list of developer responsible items shrink in the memos and things between the developer and the city. But one thing that stayed the same included the five-inch concrete floor slab, which now the DPZ Committee says was totally omitted. In every document that occurs, like in 2012 August and in 2014, the developer lists under their costly, the five-inch floor slabs. They took away other things and put those into the city's column, and now, at the very last minute, they took the floor slab too and said, "We're not paying for that, the city's gotta pay half." I think that's wrong. I think you guys should pull that item and should reconsider how much the city is paying for these supposedly omitted items. The developer should pay for the floor slab, it's been their intention in multiple documents, and if they're our business partner, they should honor their intentions, which are repeatedly stated. You should recalculate the amount that the city's paying in a 50 percent share, removing the $96,320 that goes to build a concrete floor slab. And even though it's the last minute, because it's scheduled at the ordinance level tonight, you guys could still do that and save the city some $50,000 once all is said and done. Thank you very much.
Where's my next sheet? Oh, I'm sorry. There, I lost my sheet. One second, please. Oh, here it is. Okay, thank you. Paula Wolf.
How many left? Is that it?
Paula.
Paula Wolf, 444 Larch. I guess, you know, I'm like a broken record, but I do want to acknowledge that I talked about the park board and the school board, never talking about what the residents need. It's what they need, what they're going to allow to be done or give up. Now, Mayor Morley did acknowledge that last week after I spoke, and I wish that could be stressed to the boards. We're the important people. A school needs a roof, it needs plumbing, it does not need a huge addition. The same thing with the park board. Yeah, they need to maintain their facility, but they don't go, need to go into debt to do it, not at this point, when this city is in trouble. And we are in trouble. We don't have a very good reputation, and, you know, we just kind of hold our breaths every time we have a good storm. And it's not in one particular area. And I'm very happy that the south side's getting a little help, it looks like it's going well. Well, I'm on the north side, and I'm in between two projects, and it doesn't sound like I'm connected to either one of them. So I wish that would change. And I think it was Alderman Mulliner said something about, you know, we have such a great credit rating, that's wonderful, but just because we have it, we don't have to use it. We don't have to go deeper in debt. Maybe it's time to take a step back and do what is needed, but not go out on a limb, because then taxes or whatever will have to go up to pay these loans. And just because I have a hu, you know, I can charge $10,000 or something, doesn't mean I'm going to, because I know eventually I have to pay for it. Back to the parks, I'd like to know exactly what are the incentives for the parks and the schools, now that they have gotten what they wanted with the extension of that lease. I know there's gonna be a meeting, I believe it's on the 7th, and you're gonna want input as to what the residents want. I surely hope you really listen, and I hope we get an idea of how you're gonna fill these storefronts, because we've got a lot that are currently empty, and there's gonna be even more that are out there. I don't know what you can do about making the rents more reasonable, but a lot of people are leaving town because they can't afford the rents, and they've been here for a long time. So that, I think that's something we need presented to us. You know, how are you going to go out and attract things, change things? Not nail shops, not yogurt shops, not banks, my goodness, we have so many banks. And we have a lot of athletic facilities, we need something different. You know, something that appeals to all the different generations in this town, the kids, the young families, and then the old people, too. So I just hope you think about it. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Last, we have Kathleen Sullivan.
As it's the last meeting of the year, I kind of like to look back and see what has happened this year, and in the area of flood mitigation, it's been a big year. So I want to thank you, especially the Public Works Committee, for all of your hard work, including Diane, who's no longer on City Council. It's been a great year, you guys are finishing your first storm mitigation project over there on St. Charles near Sandberg. Very exciting, you have the quarry approved, and you're gonna work on engineering services tonight, which I'm in favor of, to get that project completed. You have an agreement with the school board, and you're circling in on your agreement with the Park District, your first one. I look forward to the momentum continuing into 2016, and thank you very much. Happy New Year.
That's it, as far as sign-ins go.
Okay, that's it for folks who have signed in this evening. On our sign-in sheet, is there anybody who wishes to address the council who did not have an opportunity to sign in? If so, at this time, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. That concludes public forum, on to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? On to consent agenda, Agenda Item 6. At this time, is there any item, any alderman wishes to see removed from the consent agenda to vote no or provide additional comment? Alderman Bram?
6.29.
6.29. Alderman Kennedy?
6.33, please.
6.33, 2933. Anyone else? Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus items 6.29 and 6.33. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Levin. Clerk Spencer.
I'm sorry, I'm a little behind tonight. It was, Mulliner?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Deuter, absent. Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmsky, absent. York?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Healy?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, two abs, three absent.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absent, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved.
Two, three?
29 and 33.
33.
Okay.
Let me find that. Oh, yeah.
Agenda Item 6.29 is an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I would ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to develop agreement for the Addison Corridor redevelopment project in the downtown redevelopment project area of the city of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Bram, you had this pulled.
Before you go to Alderman Bram, I would say that I would be making an offer under the appropriate rule to defer it for two weeks to look at some of the additional documentation that's been referenced, and if somebody wanted to join in that, then I would defer to do that. Otherwise, I would turn the floor over to Alderman Bram.
According to our ordinance, that's a, is that a motion, Alderman Levin?
It's actually just under a request where another alderman can join in, but I didn't pre-
According to our code-
It's under HH.
An ordinance can be held until next meeting if three aldermen so request and submit such a request in writing, but, but we've done that, we've done that verbally. That's a C.
It was under HH, Mayor?
No, CC. CC, HH. Page nine of Municipal Code 2.0, I think. 2.06, CC, Alderman Levin.
I see.
Oh. Because we're beyond the report. That's irrelevant, though. Request by three aldermen may be in the committee report proposing to an ordinance, no ordinance, so they defer to another section, if any deadline or pass of the ordinance. Well, there is a codicil to it. All right, so noted, I guess, you're not asking for-
I think you're correct, Mayor, actually, because the HH is probably for a report, we're at the ordinance stage.
Oh, HH, I'm sorry, CC is at the ordinance.
Right.
So you need at least three, and it also says, "No proposed ordinance shall be deferred under this section if any deadline for passage of the ordinance would not be met." I don't know if this has any contractual deadlines that are, will be met or not. Anyway, so, we'll see if somebody joins you. Alderman Bram, you had a comment, question?
Well, I guess in light of what was just stated, I mean, what procedurally, what are the next steps, people raising their hand, to defer for two weeks?
I need, well, I would ask the city attorney and the city manager first if there's any deadline that is being missed by deferring this. That'd be my first question.
Well, the closing is scheduled for next week. Part of this, as you're aware, is to close on the retail portion of this, which is scheduled for next week. That's not to say that it couldn't go on after that, the closing couldn't occur after the 4th of January. So-
All right, but let me ask you this question. Pardon the interruption, city attorney. Last sentence under CC says, "No proposed ordinance shall be deferred under this section if any deadline for passage of the ordinance would not be met."
Yeah, and that's what I was getting to. I don't think, I mean, there's, it's not as though we have to file our levy by the last Tuesday in December, we can't go later than that. This is a date that was scheduled among the parties to close this next week. So it's not a deadline set by statute or anything like that, Mayor.
Yeah, I understand, but it's a deadline nonetheless that's in the ordinance, though.
Well, it's a deadline that was established because the parties agreed to close on the last week of December. That's the deadline.
I mean, council can do what it wants, we can suspend rules, but I'm telling you right now, the way I interpret it is that there's a deadline that would be missed. I understand what your, the city attorney's saying, we have the flexibility of missing that deadline.
Because the, yes, because the closing, it's not like we're complying in a provision in a contract that says we have to close by December 27th or December 28th. It doesn't actually say that, but we have set a date among the parties to do so in the last week of December.
I'm gonna withdraw my request.
Alderman Bram, back to you.
Thank you. I'm not really going to go ad nauseam. I spoke to this two weeks ago, or whenever the last time we talked about it. There's public comment on this very issue. I think, you know, I think I stated it two weeks ago, going in the well one too many times. I think that there is documentation to support about, as the resident stated, the concrete slab, and now we're, if this moves forward, paying for part of that. So I can't support this, I didn't support the report two weeks ago, and that's all I have to say.
Any additional comments? Clerk Spencer, I ask you call roll.
Levin?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter, absent. Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmsky, absent. York?
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Healy?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Ten ayes, one nays, three absent.
Ten ayes, one nays, motion carries. Agenda Item 6.29 is approved. On to Agenda Item 6.33, it's a resolution, I'd ask Clerk Spencer to read the resolution.
A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Elmhurst, Illinois, and Elmhurst Park District for the construction, operation, and maintenance of stormwater improvements in York Commons Park, Elmhurst, DuPage County, Illinois.
Okay, put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Leader. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During our public works meeting last week, we discussed the subject of the IGA for York Commons, and at the meeting, we had representatives from the Elmhurst Park District. And one item that we asked for them to take a look at was the requirement there for an automatic shut-off valve. During the meeting, we discussed the fact that that hasn't, that was initially brought up during the design of the project. That information was then taken back by the engineers when they went ahead and they designed the inlet on the crescent side of the project to hold or take the capacity of a 100-year storm. And let me kind of take a step back. The idea and the question that came up was, bless you, was that if, if we exceeded the capacity of the storage area in York Commons, what do we do with that next gallon of water? Do we let that go downstream and flood areas in southwest Elmhurst, or do we put that back up upstream into the crescent area? And you kind of have to make your decision. And so what was done by the engineering staff was to create that pipe that held that 100-year storm volume, so that if it exceeded that, it would back up into the crescent area and would not require a separate shut-off valve. And so that, that information was reviewed by our engineers. As I understand it, that same situation was reviewed with the engineers at V3, who are with the Park District, and they, they agreed and understood that, yes, by sizing the pipe appropriately for that 100-year storm, there was not a need for a separate shut-off valve. Fast forward to later on in the week, when the Park District got together to review the IGA, as I understand it, City Manager Gabowski was at the meeting, he brought up these very facts that I've brought up, related to Christopher Burke Engineering, saying there wasn't a need for shut-off valve, and that V3, in their discussions previously, had believed that there was not a need as well. As it happened, the Park District went ahead and passed, I believe, obviously by a majority, to leave the shut-off valve in there. I think really it's completely unnecessary, we're talking about something that's been engineered out by the, by the design. This is a, an automatic shut-off valve that's gonna cost probably in the range of $100,000 to do this, based on what the requirement, and, you know, everything we've talked about this project, you know, we've added the 79-year lease, we're talking about spending another $700,000, excuse me, another $100,000 for the shut-off valve. We go into Golden Meadows Park, you know, we're at least another $400,000 above what we think might be the appraised value for us to be able to do that project. I think we're getting to the point, we're adding up some serious amounts of dollars here, you know, and if you add the other park properties, we're probably above $2 million that we're gonna be required to spend for, to be able to do these projects, above what the project costs are. But I'm gonna stop there and say, I really am, you know, really against the idea of spending unnecessary dollars on something that truly has been engineered out. The other piece of it is, I believe, from the legal side, based on the fact that we don't believe this is necessary, it becomes a question about indemnification of this, if we did go forward with it, and to the best of my knowledge, there's been some dialogue back and forth between legal representation of the city and attempts to get this to be discussed with legal from the Park District, and that hasn't happened. So I'm, right now, kind of uneasy about this, but I'd like to hear what other members of the committee and the council would like to say about it. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Alderman Mulliner?
I think that one of the things we do is we hire engineers to give us their best advice, and when we're talking about taxpayer dollars, and we've gotten engineers, and we've gotten a concurrence from a secondary engineer saying the same thing, that this has been engineered to work appropriately without a valve, I don't think we should spend the extra additional dollars for it, because I believe that there's also gonna be additional dollars on top of that by the time we're done with the project. So I would say that, in my opinion, we should remove that valve and let the project move forward, as it was agreed to before.
Alderman Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this was something at the end of the committee meeting, this information just kind of popped in. It was, it was very upsetting. It almost seems like the Park Board seems to think that they have a different source of funding for, you know, I believe the same dollar, or the same resident gives to the Park Board as well as it gives to the city. So this is a complete, you know, act of spite, in my opinion. It's been one thing after another with the Park Board, I've never seen anything like it. I really would like to vote against this, as is, and maybe, maybe I can entertain some support for that, because this is just, it's, if it's not a 79-year lease for the fire station, it's, you know, we gotta pay them a little extra for the land, we've got to, because of DNR issues, we've gotta add a shut-off valve that's not even required, and it's actually even by their own engineer determined to be, you know, over, overkill. So I, I'm fine voting no on this, on this amendment, in this agreement, and let the chips fall where they may. It's only $100,000, but folks, it's $100,000. It's a lot of money, and we just can't get treated like this. This is crazy. There's no relationship right now.
Alderman Hanquist?
So my opinion here is that through most of these negotiations, what we've talked about is, we would come to some agreement for both parties to get a fair, equitable stake in, in this case, the extension, and then we would get use of the land. Along this whole, you know, and Golden Meadows point, it would be the 1.54- whole, you know, and Golden Meadows' point, it would be the 1.5 for purchasing the land. But what has been consistent throughout this whole process is that the city would decide and would engineer and would pay for stormwater. So in this case, we are stepping up to do that for York Commons, and we've engineered it for York Commons, and we're paying for all of the stormwater requirements for that park as part of the project. So this is really the park board coming back and saying, well, we don't like one piece of it, so we think you guys ought to do this. It hasn't been part of our conversation throughout the process to go back and forth and decide. Have the park board then tell us how we should engineer it. It's been up to us to decide how to engineer these, as we would do at Golden Meadows, if we work out a transaction there, and any other spot. So I'm against it from that standpoint because it's really now the city's responsibility, excuse me, to take this project and make it successful from a stormwater perspective. Anything else above and beyond that is kind of tangential, the whole conversation, and I don't think we should really consider it, especially something that can cost us an extra $100,000.
Alderman Levin.
Well, then, the issue is kind of new to me, and I appreciate how you've presented, Alderman Kennedy. I don't know that personally I would go so far as to taint the relationship with the park district. I know it's been a long road, and I have listened to all but the last of the stormwater communications meetings. But what Alderman Conquest has stated rings true to me in terms of my followings of the work, is that we are responsible for the engineering. And for this one site to be told that there's a specific requirement of an engineering element, doesn't seem like that meets the way, or doesn't ring true with the way we've done the other sites and how we've done it. So I'm not, I don't, not in favor of, and it's highlighted in here, maybe that was added, but I don't think I'm in favor of that amendment. And I'm hopeful that the park district would reconsider and not dictate, you know, how the engineering is supposed to be done, particularly where it's costing taxpayer money for no additional value whatsoever, except maybe some feelings of assurance that aren't really needed.
Additional comments or questions? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the discussions of stormwater management and the dealings with both the parks and the schools, I applaud all government bodies. It has been a long road. Obviously, the focus from the city perspective is stormwater management. It's a lesser priority for the other two government bodies. So I do applaud them for listening, coming to the table, and speaking with us. I don't have the same sentiment from the standpoint of this hasn't been discussed. I've heard it at some of the communication meetings, thrown out there from the standpoint of needing some type of valve system. My surprise really comes from, this wasn't in the report prior to this, and now when it comes to ordinance time, we're making a modification to say that we, you know, should move forward with an automated shut-off valve. I do have the same sentiments, and I voiced these at committee in regards to, it is the responsibility, even though I applaud the park district, it is the responsibility of the city to make sure we're managing the stormwater appropriately. And yes, the park district is kind of taking a step, some may say above and beyond, to ensure that no residents around the parks get flooded. But I really, wholeheartedly believe it is the responsibility and accountability of the City of Elmhurst and its elected officials to ensure that to happen, not the park district's responsibility or accountability to do that. So I can't support this because of the fact that I feel, after all the discussions we've had, there's already sufficient throttling, and that's due to the size of the pipe that will be proposed going into this detention area. That is already, with that, with the natural law of gravity, is throttling the flow into the detention area and will ensure that if there is any over-100-year storm, we will decide, along with our engineers, what should the overflow route be. And we discuss that in committee as well. I would hate to just vote no on this, because we have come a long way. So at this time, I'd like to, if it's appropriate, to make a motion to amend, to essentially remove or delete on page two, the highlighted or bold areas in paragraph two under "Stormwater Improvements", which state that this needs to be added, starting with "Which improvement shall specifically include the installation of an automated shut-off valve to the inlet to said improvement to prevent said improvement from exceeding the 100-year elevation?" And one thing to add, while I throw that motion out there, is that there has been many statements by various park board members that we are giving this land to you. You do with it as you wish. You can flood it with a five-year vent or over a 100-year vent. So I kind of look at this as a little bit contradictory to that statement. If we're allowed to flood it to whatever we feel is necessary, and those initial words were true sentiment.
Alderman Bram, since you added on there, I'm going to ask you to, you said you have a motion to amend the resolution. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. Can you direct me, I've got it here in front of me, the parts that you would change?
Page two, paragraph, well, it's numbered.
So is this on the exhibit?
Yeah, it's under, my eyes are blurry here. Looks like.
Oh, I got it. Page two, section two.
It is under the exhibit, I think.
It's the agreement.
Stormwater improvements. Do you see that?
Which improvement shall specifically include the installation?
Correct. That's bolded or end underlined.
Everything that's underlined, you'd remove?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second for that? Alderman Kennedy, second. Okay. So we have a motion to amend the resolution before us that basically removes the underlined part of the exhibit, which says, no shut-off valve.
Correct.
All right. Additional discussion? Alderman Healy.
Just a question on procedure, then. So if we pass that resolution with the amendment, I then assume it goes back to the park district for further consideration? Because at that point, you know, there is no agreement, I guess you would say? I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Well, I would say yes. The logic would be we'd send it back to the park district. Whether or not it would be considered, it's up to the park district. Let me add some context to this, because I know that City Manager Grabowski attended the meeting. And I think everyone here is feeling the same, which is, we're very close, and we want to get this agreement done for the residents of Elmhurst. So, and I'll paraphrase a little bit of what Alderman Kennedy said, but then I'm going to ask City Manager, if I missed something, let me know. City Manager went to the last park board meeting, which was at last Wednesday, and I think brought Christopher Burke as well, although I don't think Mr. Burke had a chance to speak.
Correct.
Okay. So, but City Manager, as is his right to do as a citizen, spoke during their public forum, and made what I would say a plea to the park district not to include the shut-off valve, for reasons that were stated, that it can be engineered without it. I don't know if this was part of the City Manager's mention. My concern is it's mechanical, which means it'll fail at some point, and if it's unnecessary. But my point in bringing up this piece for the council to understand is that that request was already made verbally, just so everybody knows, directly to the park district. And the park district had an open discussion about it and rejected it, flat-out rejected it. So I don't know how the park district would react to this. I understand they need feedback from us. I'm just telling council, we're close on this. That's additional information that you should be aware of. So. Additional conversation, comment? Alderman Levin?
Well, we try to do things that are common sense, I think. And I don't understand this. I don't understand why we would spend $100,000 for something that's not needed. It seems to me there's a missing piece that I don't understand of why the park district would require it. So unless there's an explanation that could be delivered to me as an alderman that would make me say, yes, this is the right thing to do, I can't, I have to support the motion to take it out.
Let me add this bit of information. City Manager Grabowski, correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding when asked of the park district, the need for the valve, the park district, one of their original statements is that they didn't want to ever transfer someone's problem to somebody else. They have said that. The, so the concern would be, is my understanding from the last time I spoke to Mr. Rogers about it, the concern was that if the, if York Commons overflows, the west lobe of York Commons overflows into York Street, does that create a significant or any problem for people further west? And it's my understanding that City Manager Grabowski, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have asked our engineers specifically about this, both in 100-year flood and a 500-year flood, is there an impact? And it's my understanding that is there no additional impact to homes downstream with this overflow during either 100-year flood or a 500-year flood.
That is correct. That's what Christopher Burke has determined.
So that's what, that's the thinking behind what our engineers told us, is how we can do what I'll call a "we're system" without a valve.
May I ask one follow-up question?
Sure.
Was there any information provided by the park district or another engineer that suggested that that statement is wrong, or incorrect, I should say?
City Manager, I was not at the meeting.
No. In fact, in discussions with the engineer that the park district has engaged, he concurs that a valve's not needed, which is why it's so puzzling for us that the park board would insist that a valve is required.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Alderman Wagner?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Could we get a confirmation on the size of this pipe?
Forty-eight inches.
Forty-eight, four feet in diameter.
Forty-eight inches.
So it's not an eight-inch pipe come out of your house that you can put a shut-off valve onto. This is a, this is an involved project.
I think it would be a large valve.
Thank you.
$100,000.
Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, I have to also state that this issue surprised me. I know, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this particular agreement. And I think we want to set the tone. Going forward, we have potentially four other agreements with the park district on flood mitigation projects. And looking at our latest stormwater project update that is provided for the Public Works Committee meetings, and we have a 10-acre feet project. We've spent $150,000 on engineering, and the estimated construction cost for this York Commons project is $1.7 million. Adding another $100,000 to it, while not huge, it is obviously unnecessary, in my opinion. And then to share the mayor's concerns, this is a mechanical device that will require maintenance in the future, ongoing indefinitely. So it's not just $100,000, it's the additional maintenance. And with all these projects, we tried to design them strictly with gravity, with not, with as little mechanical assistance as possible to minimize future maintenance costs. So in this case, I do have the concern of the future maintenance costs and the, just the lack of need for, to spend $100,000. So I would tend to concur with the motion to take this clause out.
Any additional comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll on the motion to amend, which is basically removing the underlined portion of section two in the exhibit.
Bram.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter, absent. Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Palmsky, absent. York.
Yes.
Toledo, absent. Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Resolution is amended to remove the requirement of a shut-off valve. So that's now the new motion before us. Any additional conversation or question, comment? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, at this time, ask that this be deferred to date certain, two weeks from now or our next, whatever our next city council meeting is, so that the city attorney can take the necessary time to address the indemnification question that is before us on this. I mean, certainly, I think that, regardless of whether that valve's in there or not, we need to have an answer as to how that would be approached, should we ultimately have that requirement still put upon us to move the project forward.
Okay. Motion to postpone till date certain, which would be January 4th.
Yes, please.
Yes? Alderman Wagner?
Fourth. I'm holding up fourth.
Yes, fourth.
I'm making sure I heard right.
Point of order?
Yes, Alderman Bram.
My understanding is we pass the resolution, how do we defer something that just passed?
No, no, we've passed your amendment to the resolution.
Oh, you're right.
So now, resolution is amended. Alderman Kennedy has a motion to postpone until date certain, which would be our meeting on January 4th. We have a second to postpone till January 4th. Second by Alderman Wagner. If I may be so bold, Alderman Kennedy, just to add, probably most I've spoken on this issue in two years. Your concern being that, I know there was a question of liability and who was directing the valve to be in or not be in, and we want our attorneys to give us that additional information before we make a final decision on this.
Yes, sir.
So have those additional conversations with legal representation from the park board. Okay. Actually, sorry, so we have a motion and a second. This is debatable just on the timing of it, but not on the merits of the ordinance. So anybody else have an issue or question or debate as it relates to the timing? All right. We have a motion to postpone to date certain, January 4th. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Wagner. Clerk Spencer.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter, absent. Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky, absent. York.
Aye.
Toledo, absent. Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays. Motion to postpone. The amended resolution has been approved. We'll pick it back up on January 4th. Onto committee reports. Agenda item seven. This is a report out of finance. I'd ask Clerk Spencer to please read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare an amendment to the municipal code of ordinances changing the water rate, sewer rate, and capital investment recovery charges as outlined above, effective for usage build on or after January 4, 2016. The FCAAS committee further recommends that the city attorney prepare an amendment to the municipal code of ordinances to include both cubic meter rates and per thousand gallon rates for fiscal year 2016, as outlined above. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman Noel P. Toledo, and Mark P. Sapatino.
Okay. To put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a four-page report. There's lots of charts. There's lots of backup information. In a nutshell, costs continue to rise. Some of it's controlled by us. We've made conscious decisions to replace. by us. We've made conscious decisions to replace increasing amounts of water mains. Other items have, for lack of a better word, been handed to us in the consumables, the water that we receive from the DuPage Water Commission. Certainly not throwing those guys under the bus because they answer to the City of Chicago that controls the rate with which water is sold to the members. So, it's all been pretty clear as it's unfolded over the past four years. One thing that we don't know for certain this year is the exact percentage increase that we're going to get. And as city staff does, and Marilyn and Tom do a great job, they provide us with what their best estimate of a cost increase is going to be, and we put that into our calculations. So, that's what we have before us tonight. It's all pretty clear to those of us who've spent a lot of time working on it. We've spent a lot of time breaking all these different components out so that it's a lot easier to administer. And as such, if we find ourselves faced with an actual percentage rate from the DuPage Water Commission that's less than what we're anticipating, we can bring it back to committee and make any adjustments that we need to, up or down. But given what we know today, this was the best solution that we could come up with. We've got to get some cash into these accounts. They're all, all the fund balances are low and need to be built up. So, that kind of led us to as responsible elected officials to do what we did, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, very good. Any comments or questions as it relates to this report? Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, just to follow up to some of the comments that Chairman York had, this unfortunately is not good news for the residents of Elmhurst. Due to increased costs, we have an 8% increase, approximately an 8% increase in the water, a 7.9% increase on the sewer side, and a small reduction in the capital investment recovery charge. And the impact on the average homeowner for this particular increase is about $84 a year, or about $7 a month. So, we are doing this because of our cash balance situation, and it's going to take a while to get us to our target of 25% of our operating expenses. In fact, we won't be at that level till the year 2021. So, we are working hard. City staff, Public Works, and our finance group are working very hard to continue to control expenses and keep the rates in check. At this time, we do have, we have this rate increase that we have to push through. Thanks.
Any other comments? Alderman Healy?
Thank you, Mayor. Could I ask either the chairman or vice chairman just to talk a little bit about the change in billing strategy? As I understand it, we're going from a minimum charge to a, you know, cost per use, I think is the right way to say it. Am I correct on that?
Alderman York?
We instituted that back in 2014, actually, right with the CERC charge. So, it really hasn't changed since the water study was done. The water rate study was done two years ago. We are changing, we're billing in thousand gallons. That's the one change that we're making this year, is we used to bill in cubic metric, cubic, what, cubic meters. Yeah, and which was not understandable. Well, obviously, I don't even understand it. But that's what we were billing, and we're switching now to thousand gallons. So, it's a more understandable. And this will also tie in with the new water meters. We've got like a $5 million investment we're making over the next couple of years to put new water meters in that read in thousands of gallons versus cubic meters. So...
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll.
York.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski, absent. Toledo, absent. Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter, absent. Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Onto reports and recommendations from appointed elected officials. Mayor Morley, 8.1. It's an honor to serve. Merry Christmas. That's it.
City Manager Grabowski? Thank you. A couple of items. One, the stormwater website was recently launched, and that is at elmhurststormwaterplan.org. I would encourage everyone to go take a look at that. We just put a press release out, and we've been putting it out on social media so people understand. We hope it's a one-stop shopping for everyone who wants to know about stormwater and the improvements that the city is undertaking. Second item is the parking deck should be open January 15th. So, they're moving very well on that. The weather certainly has cooperated, and we look forward to that. The other thing was just to wish everyone here and out there a Merry Christmas as well.
Okay. Agenda 8.3, it's a summary of our trolley. City Manager Grabowski's going to fill us in.
I am, thank you. Recently, PA and S Committee heard a report from our communications manager regarding the trolley program that was held last summer. On board docs was a report that talked about how we went about it, and what we think is a successful program from last summer. It was a little bit abbreviated, but we tried that to see what ridership would be like. And what we saw was increased ridership just about every week. And so, based on that, and based on a couple other items such as the business community feedback, survey feedback on social media, and just general overall comments that were very positive, we're going to try it again. This came up at the budget meeting, and so the question was, what are the parameters going to be? And so, we came up with some parameters and some recommendations. Those were on the last page of the report. If you haven't had a chance to read them, they include better advertising by working with our Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Explorer Elmhurst Committee that our communications manager is retooling. Introduce some unique features to the program that hopefully differentiate it from last year. Increased advertising on social media and local media. Working with neighboring community communication outlets to promote the program. Additional coverage in the e-newsletter in the front porch. We're going to extend the program run so that it covers more of the summer. We're going to limit the days to Saturday and Sundays. We're going to eliminate Friday as one of the days. And then, of course, continue to revisit the trolley route and effectiveness as we go through that. Increased signage, possibly some sponsorship opportunities, and add larger signs at the stop points along with historical narrative while you're on the trolley. So, we're trying to integrate a lot of other interesting features of the city during this, and we think that that will add to the ridership, and it will be even more successful next summer.
Any other questions or comments for City Manager Grabowski? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I guess some of the comments that were just stated by the city manager, I was expecting more of a summary of last year, not a statement on where the city manager feels this program will be for this upcoming year. I do have some concerns when we hang our hat on, and even in this summary from this past year, hang our hat on saying, well, it's been beneficial because of the business community feedback survey, when in this memo itself, it says the survey results were inconclusive due to the following facts, and I won't run through them other than pretty much almost, only 16 responded. I don't want to get into debate over this. I think the committee will debate it in 2016, and we'll see a report as a council at that point and move forward. But I am glad to see, even though a long time coming, the results of seeing the ridership increase. We do need to keep in mind, as that ridership increases, that's the same, potentially, the same families or people getting on and then getting back on, to get back to their home or their residence, wherever that may be. So, that's not individual, at least my understanding of reading the chart, of individual trips. It's probably multiple people going to a destination and coming back. In regards to the summary, and what looks to be, and I've stated this during budget time, looks to be some of the concerns that the committee will look at in 2016. I will strongly encourage and recommend, like I did during budget, that this gets not expanded solely on duration of timeframe, from what date to what date, but to expand it within the community so all the residents, or more of the residents, could enjoy the trolley throughout the city of Elmhurst, other than the current route allows today. I do want to ask the city manager in regards to some of the comments. I mean, it seems a lot of this is speculative. Take pulling comments and making a judgment call, or I shouldn't assume that there was a judgment made, from social media and public comments, I assume on the street, or maybe even here in City Hall, is concerning of me. We should be looking at the data solely at a very empirical nature compared to comments pulled off of various sources. So, I would look for one this is reviewed in the upcoming year, for it to be based on really empirical data and not gut feel from some of the comments made in the past.
Okay. Alderman Healy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple follow-up comments to that. First, I would agree that 16 responses is not a solid base from which to base how we move forward. But I know several people at staff level engaged with the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, City Center, and had conversations. So, is that empirical data? No, but it's our people working with the business community to get that feedback. So, I'm comfortable when the summary says that the business community was in support of it, that that's foundationally correct. In terms of the route, one of the things we learned, and personally, I was very pleased to see the staff changed it halfway through, one of the things we were picking up from the riders was that an hour loop was too long. People wanted it kept to quick, efficient. So, we changed it to a half hour, and I think that that change was very well received. And we want to keep it to a half hour. So, when we start to talk about expanding it, whether it's to the north side of town, further south, east, not so much west, but you talk about expanding the loop, and we definitely do not want to do that. We want to keep the loop to an hour. So, then, if we're going to move northeast, further south, you're talking about adding additional routes. And that's certainly something that we're open to discussing. But obviously, when you increase the number of routes, you increase the expenditure. And I think we all felt good about what happened last year. I think collectively, we all felt good what happened last year. But we didn't feel that to expand to a second or third route to encompass some of these other areas of town was a way to go in year two. Potentially in year three, potentially in year four, we can look to do that. But the committee, and I think, again, collectively, we felt, you know, a modest increase to the program, modest being lengthen the time, the date served, was the appropriate way to go for year two. But certainly, when we look at this again, in year two for year three, we can look to expand the areas served and the routes. But of course, we can also do that at budget time. So, if an alderman wants to, you know, move to see the program grow expanded, we can do that then. But that was kind of the rationale behind how we approach it for year two.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Ordinance. Agenda item nine. Clerk Spencer?
A budget and appropriation ordinance for the city of Elmhurst for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016, and ending on December 31, 2016.
Okay. This concludes, this is the final piece of our entire budget process of this last quarter. I will put this before council. I'll ask someone to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, any comments?
Sure, I'll keep mine brief. I think, first of all, thank you to the city manager and the department managers for spending a ton of time, and quality time, with this. Simply because revenues are improving doesn't give anybody a pass for not doing a good job. And I think we're seeing the fruits of that in this budget, in this budget document. Things are well thought out. You know, I think as everybody up here, I don't happen to agree with 100% of 943,000 line items that are on the budget. But I think what we have here is an awesome document that provides a solid plan for the city to move forward on. As Alderman Bram indicated a few minutes ago, you know, the real work is in the details. We've got a plan here. It's going to require a lot of work at the committee level to produce reports with good information in them, and justifiable reasons for us all to move forward with this budget. But at the end of the day, I'm very pleased with it. I know it takes a heck of a lot of work to do it, and I think we've got a good product in front of us.
Okay. Any other comments as it relates to our budget? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief as well. I agree with Alderman York. Not that I agree with, and I don't have the exact number of items that he just stated, but every item in the budget. But I think from the discussions that we had, that I am in support of moving forward with the budget as it stands today.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer?
York.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmski, absent. Toledo, absent. Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter, absent. Sapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, three absents.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Budget ordinance is approved. Before we go on to other business, I just want to thank staff for all of their hard work on this, and also want to thank council. This really concludes our financial stuff for the year. We not only did a budget, but we also did a levy. The budget's a great planning document, and in effect, we're able to lower the burden of taxes on the citizens of Elmhurst another $500,000 this year. So, really appreciate it. Onto other business. Any other business? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Morley. I just wanted to highlight the fact that Public Works and Buildings Committee will not be meeting this coming Monday. We worked ahead at our last meeting, so we could be out for this coming week. So, we'll get right back at it on the 11th when we meet again.
That's one chairman. Any other chairman want to jump in? Alderman, you're 11 today.
That's right. The DPG will not be meeting either. We're several meetings ahead of where we need to be, so...
Alderman York?
I'm going to take next week off, but these guys should be working. So, no, I'm just teasing. We're not having any meetings next week either. Everybody enjoy the holidays.
Alderman Healy, I'll see you next Monday?
No.
Okay. So, no committee meetings next week. All right? Motion to adjourn? Motion, Alderman Kennedy has something else.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick item. A number of months ago, I made a request to have some materials pulled together to educate all of us on the subject of how referendums are done.
Yes.
I know we've got a lot of other priorities, but I would ask if we could, whether that's city manager and/or city attorney might be able to pull something together for us for the early part of the year to educate us how that whole process works. Because I think there's a number of issues within the city where I think groups might be talking about that. And so, I think it would be good for us to understand a little bit about it ahead of those actions.
Okay, noted. Now, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner?
Hold it. I have one thing.
Alderman Dunn.
Alderman Mulliner, please withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion.
Alderman Dunn, Merry Christmas. What else?
Yeah, real quick, we entered the holiday season in the downtown of Elmhurst with something missing this year. We did, for good reason, because of an SSA expiring, along with a lot of construction downtown. Decisions were made to forego the Christmas lights this year. Got a lot of concerned feedback from residents, and I know a lot of the other aldermen did also. So, I was...